Good evening. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Tonight is Monday, September 8th, and we welcome you to our regular September meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Action on minutes of August 11th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
No.
Second. Any comments, corrections? I'm not hearing any, and I know I didn't have any. So, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the August 11th, 2025 Board of Education meeting minutes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, so, Mr. Brooks, Mr. Delventura, and Ms. Rader are abstaining. Item number four is topics, public comment for topics on the board agenda. Is there anyone who would like to address the board on the topic on the agenda? Come on up. Ask you please for your name and address, and to limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Poly Reader, 280 Sage Hollow Road in Guilford. Just speaking at this point because, of course, this time of year priorities and initiatives are on the agenda, and I could say one way or the other, I know the board very excitedly and very passionately talked about building a sense of community, particularly at the high school, strengthening the sense of community, I should say, and the culture. And obviously, one of the best things that we could do with regard to that is the cell phone policy, bell to bell, which we are still waiting around for. I'm trying to not be completely inflamed about it. So, I just, you know, the entirety of New York State, thousands of schools could handle this. Our superintendent, his fantastic leadership team is more than skilled, more than experienced, and we already have two schools doing it that, you know, just copy over the policy and just put it in place. So now, if anything is able to happen during the school year, you're going to have to have a change for the kids who've already come in as new freshmen. I mean, it just does not make sense. But beyond that, I mean, that's really kind of a quick fix, smaller item. My junior was a third grader, the last time start time was addressed by the board, and that was a fundamentally flawed task force directive. It had no flexibility for instructional time. I could go on at length about it. I mean, we all know what the right thing to do is. It's not rocket science. It is complicated. It does take a lot of staff time to, you know, put all the specifics together. But we cannot continue to have all of our high schoolers, unless you're, it's not equitable, unless you're able to have someone drive you or drive yourself, they all come to school for 7:20 start time, what it used to be eight years ago. So it's like smoke and mirrors, the fact that the 7:40 start time, it really is. I know the kids love that time, and it is really valuable in the cafeteria, but they're losing that time of sleep. You know, the day needs, the clock needs to be shifted. So I just wanted to say that because I really doubt, but I'm so hopeful that something will be in amongst the priorities and initiatives to really address it.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hi. Alex Heatherington. I live at 150 Boston Street, and I have a third grader in Calvin Leet. And I'm here because I believe the single most important thing I could do for him is to try to address what was just discussed about moving start times to the recommended healthy start time for adolescents, and that's so that my son doesn't die in a drowsy driving accident or have depression and suicide, both of which have been linked to the, to when schools start at a time that does not permit adolescents to get the requisite level of sleep, not to mention the improved learning outcomes that would occur if we move to the recommended, the American Medical Association recommended start time of 8:30. I know that this is a very tough and thorny, challenging issue that I've spoken with many of you about, and I know that there aren't easy solutions, and the town has looked at it before, but I would have two responses to that. The first is that when the town did look at it before, the conclusion of this board was to, by 2019, seek to get to a 7:55 a.m. start time, and it's now six years later, so I would have hoped we could have at least made that progress, that even if the task force before was flawed, we didn't even get as far as was indicated then. And my second response, which I think is the more important one, is that I think the science on adolescent sleep is as established as the science on lead poisoning, and if we were told that we had a bunch of lead pipes in the high school that were, you know, preventing, causing learning impairment and preventing students from achieving their potential, I don't think the response would be, man, that's really complicated to fix, can't do that, or that's going to be really expensive. And I think that's the issue that we're facing, and I think it's pretty well-known that it's that level of issue, and yeah, it will be really complicated to rip all the lead pipes out and put something new in, but I think it's pretty clear what the right thing to do is for my son selfishly and the rest of the children. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi. Michael Dorfman, 1 Polbridge Lane. I have a seventh grader and a fourth grader in the school system, and I'm speaking both on behalf of myself, my wife, and obviously our children. We're both physicians. I think I would just implore the board to, you know, think over the science. I think it's that simple. My wife's actually a pulmonologist and a sleep specialist. I'm really speaking more for her and the science of sleep in terms of how, you know, it impacts our children, especially our high school age children, and what the appropriate start time should be. I think the science is clear, and I just think it's just where the focus needs to be, right? There's facts, and there's data, and I just ask you guys just to follow the data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Winters, 361 Weatherly Trail. I too am concerned with the sleep deprivation that high schoolers experience with their start time at school. It is very clear through data that they need that extra sleep. They're in their adolescence. It helps with grades. It helps with their emotional regulation. I think that everyone here knows that the data is there. We know what to do. It's just a matter of putting this into play, and I really, I ask you to ponder this and really consider putting it into play as quickly as you can. My daughter is a ninth grader here, and these start times are hard. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right. I'll just note for context for anyone listening, so the board is having gotten a report from the Technical Technology and Education Advisory Group, which last year spent the year looking into considering doing research, surveying students, parents, faculty, and staff on issues of cell phone use, also looking into AI. This was an advisory group composed of Board of Ed, community members, parents, teachers, administrators, and students. But it's not, it's something we want to take our time looking at. The feedback is varied. What students and faculty and parents want is varied, and so we purposely decided we did not want to rush a decision, and so we'll be spending some time looking at the data that was collected by the group and continuing to think thoughtfully about a policy approach for our district. And then just noting again for context, we did have this school start time group. I want to say many of my colleagues who are on the board now were not on the board at that time. A couple of us were. It was a challenging time and challenging, not because we are not clear on the research, we are really very clear on the research, but again, the upper relationalization, sorry, I'm having trouble with that word tonight, has impacts on many of the community, many people in our community, and I have vivid memory of a very packed Adams Course Room with this topic at a public forum, in which a third of the parents wanted no change, and a third of the parents wanted us to flip elementary school and high school, and then a third of the parents wanted something in between, and in each group, there were parents of kids of all ages. So it was something that community was really grappling with as well. It doesn't mean it's not important, and it doesn't mean we shouldn't think, continue to think about it and continue to consider if there are other opportunities, but just did want to provide that context for folks who may be less familiar. All right. I am going to then move us on to the next item on the agenda, which is review and approval of expenditures for the month of August.
Thank you. So I am the reviewer for the month of August, and so I'll just run through kind of the bigger picture and then go into a few details from the warrant. So expenditures for the month of August 2025 were $5,250,614.82, and that pretty much lines up where we were about a year ago at this time and for August. Our revenue for August was $18,206.42, and that includes non-resident tuition, our pre-K tuition, and some Medicaid reimbursements. And then every month, we look at how our salaries are lining up from last year and our employee benefits, and those pretty much are expended as similar to last year. Thankfully, our tuition expense is lower than the prior year. Our supplies and materials are a little higher than last year, but that is really just due to the timing of bills coming out, coming in, and payments going out. Our capital expenses are a little lower than last year. We had a reimbursement from the capital lease that was requested for September, which will bring that line within budget. Transportation is pretty much similar to last year, and now we are including a line in our larger budget data that is called the non-lapsing education account, and we as a board voted to create this. We are empowered by state legislation that now allows for boards of education at the end of their fiscal year, if their money is left in the budget that were intended for educational purposes, they can be put in this non-lapsing account and accrue interest for future expenses that would be determined by the board. And right now, that balances a little over $150,000, and that will grow, and each year we'll be able to evaluate that and see if there are needs that might come up that that funding would be useful for. So the warrant we're submitting this month, total of all payments for this month is $2,656.810.68. Just a few items of note, nothing out of the ordinary. Much of this is, like I said, bills coming in, expenses going out. We did have a first of our annual lease payments, and what we do is we lease a lot of our equipment and our technology, and we pay it over about five months, and we do it earlier in the fiscal year to reduce the interest that accrues on those leases. Along those leases, we had $216,000, $200 for our Chromebooks, because we have to kind of upcycle every few years and make sure that we're keeping the technology current for our students and our staff. We had a few, you know, interesting purchases for like a hearing device for our people's services that was really helpful for some of our learning impaired students. We had a gym roof repaired at Adams. The building is over 100 years old, so things are going to happen. Wasn't a large expense, around $5,800. And at the Adams Library, we recently re-carpeted, so we had a cost to move all the books in the library furnishings out and move them back in. And then we had our annual payment to the town of Guilford for our school resource officers, and we have three school resource officers, and that costs us $135,000 a year, which is really an invaluable expense that we as a community and a school district wholly believe in and know that it has a really positive impact on our students and our faculty and their sense of safety and belonging. And so that is my report on the financials for the month of August.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So we did review these in even more depth at our Operations Committee meeting just prior to this meeting, but I will take a moment to see if any of my colleagues have anything to add or questions to ask around these. No? All right. So I'm going to request a motion to approve the August 2025 financial reports for fiscal year 2526.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right. So that's unanimous. We are up to number six, communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications that they want to report out received over the last month or so?
I think we touched on this a little on our operations, just some questions in the community around our bus service and cameras in and out of the buses, and it's understandable at the beginning of the school year when the community is not used to school buses being all over the community, and we really need to remember to, if those bus lights are flashing and the stop sign is out, that you cannot circumvent the bus and go around. We've got little and big people getting on and off of those buses, and just remind the community that, to please be safe and patient.
Yes. Thank you. Absolutely. Absolutely. Number seven on our agenda is student representatives. We will be welcoming them back next month, and so we certainly look forward to that. So we're at number eight. Dr. Freeman, I'm turning to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. And for the first item on our agenda tonight, I am going to direct your attention to the video screens and turn it over to Mr. Hamill, who's going to be introducing our new certified staff. I will note before we begin that many of these people were approved by this board over the summer. There are a number of people being introduced to you in this presentation whose employment you will in fact be approving, whose hiring you will be approving in a later item on this agenda.
Okay. Well, sure. Thank you, Dr. Freeman. It's my pleasure to welcome what we think is a talented group of educators to the Guilford Public School System, and it's my pleasure to work with Dr. Goss on August 21st and 22nd to do new educator orientation with most of these people as well. So, without further ado, here they are. At AW Cock School, we have Madeline Haberman, grade three teacher; Madeline Meyer, grade two teacher; Maran Quell, grade three teacher. At Calvin Leet, Samantha Bundros, kindergarten teacher; Valerie LaRoe Sousa, school psychologist; Bailey Meglin, grade two teacher; Kristen Petrella, kindergarten teacher; Amanda Tier, preschool teacher. At Guilford Lakes, Emily Cowles, grade four teacher; Isaac Freeman, grade two teacher; Nicole Green, grade one; Melanie Healy, preschool teacher; Paul Salem, instructional coach; Jenny Shea, grade three teacher. At Melissa Jones, we have Alessandra Menenekin, special education teacher; and serving all four elementary schools, Chris Romeo, special education coordinator. At Baldwin Middle School, we are happy to welcome Kevin Buno, principal, and Paul Capola, assistant principal. At Adams Middle School, we have Dr. Wesley Simon, interim principal; Sarah Moore, language arts teacher. At Guilford High School, we have Alicia Becker, Italian and special education teacher; David Johnson, financial literacy; and Dr. David Sacks, special education coordinator. And that is all of our certified staff.
We also, I'm going to move through my agenda in a slightly, slightly out of order. It made sense to move to the vacancy updates. So when we last met, I noted for you that we had, I think it was approximately six certified vacancies that still existed a month ago. As of today, I can let you know that we are fully staffed in all of our certified positions. There's a bit of a caveat to that. So we are fully staffed in all of our certified positions, except that two of the teachers who have signed on to positions for us were hired so late in the school year, or in the summer rather, that we are honoring a 30-day hold from their existing districts. So while all the positions are filled on paper, we are still awaiting two of those teachers to be joining us. Same for an assistant principal position, should you approve that later in your agenda. Paul is not free to join us for another week or two before he will be released from his current district. Similarly, we actually are aware of one vacancy that will occur. So one of our teachers who is under contract to us now has notified us that she has accepted a position in another district, and we are currently holding her for 30 days. So while we're fully staffed, there is still some movement happening. Those are in all of our certified positions. I also need to make you aware that we currently still have eight vacancies for paraprofessional positions. An hour ago, it was nine vacancies. We just signed somebody at the close of business this afternoon, and that number dropped from nine in my notes to eight. We have sent a notification out to our school community through our communication system, letting all of our parents and families know that we still have openings for paraprofessional positions, for lunch and for recess monitor positions, for school and safety monitor positions. It is a really good opportunity for a stay-at-home parent who may have a child who is beginning at Baldwin or beginning at Adams or beginning at the high school who feels ready to pick up some work outside of the home, please consider Guilford Public Schools as a place where you can give back to the community and serve the schools all at the same time. You'll work the same schedule as your children, you'll have the same snow days as your children. It's a really good opportunity, and it is unusual for us to still have eight vacancies, even in the uncertified positions this late into the season. So we're covering all of our students' needs, but we're still looking, and there are still opportunities in Guilford Public Schools for folks who'd like to come and be part of our team.
There was an article in the Register yesterday covering districts across the state that are really, not surprisingly, some are urban districts, but Hartford and New Haven.
Yeah, I just actually pulled it up because I wanted to see.
Yeah, no. In some cases, well over 100 positions that are not many in special ed, but also in math and social studies and bilingual education.
Yes. But even compared to our neighboring districts, it's amazing to be where we are. So kudos to you guys. Really well done.
Yeah. It's also worth noting that we, our bus company, our bus provider, has done a really good job staffing up with drivers as well, and while some other communities, if you're watching 6:00 or 11:00 o'clock news, you're noticing that some other communities are really struggling with filling driving positions, and we are very well-staffed in the driver positions as well. Those are not direct employees of the school system, but essential to the service that we provide, and our transportation provider has done a really good job there as well. So did want to give you that update on the heels of welcoming all these new members to our team tonight, and you do have a number of those last-minute hires that we'll be asking you to approve in just a few minutes. I also want to take a few minutes just to talk about the opening of school itself, and so this year, we opened a little bit early. It's the first year that we have had students back before Labor Day in approximately 10 years. Staff returned. Doug had mentioned how new educators were in for new teacher orientation, I think it was on the 21st and 22nd. Staff returned full-time on August 25th for our annual convocation. At convocation this year, we focused on our shared understanding of high-quality instruction, and we talked about how we are developing in Guilford a pedagogy that centers student learning and asks students to make their thinking visible for us in the classroom. At convocation this year, we took that same value and really leaned into it for all of us, for all of the educators who are also all learners in this school district as well. So building on the new teacher growth plan that we put into place last year that you recently just renewed for this upcoming year, we really talked with staff about as they center their students' learning and ask their students to make their thinking visible, so too do we as adults and professionals need to be concerned about our own professional learning, and we need to make our thinking visible to our colleagues, to the parents who send their students into our classrooms every day, and most importantly, to those students. And so we've really, this year, focused on taking what we know is good for our students and taking the time to think about how we apply that to our own professional growth and our own professional learning. We were also really excited at convocation this year to recognize the local Alex organization as our friend of education. Alex is a local organization in Guilford that provides support and education for LGBTQ plus youth and their families and allies. Alex has been primarily responsible for launching and supporting the Guilford Pride event in its first three years here in Guilford, at a time where some of our students are seeing their identities questioned, at a time where a certain population of our students has in fact had safety measures withdrawn from them. There is no longer a dedicated suicide hotline for LGBTQ people. You go through the same line and get the same support as everyone else. At a time where some of our students are feeling targeted in that way, to be able to recognize a community partner who celebrates those children simply for who they are was really special to us, and we were really happy to recognize Alex as our friend of education. They now join groups like Guilford Mentoring, like the Guilford Free Library, like the Guilford High School Building Committee, who has really stepped up over the years to support education in this community. We're really happy to recognize Alex in that way this year. We had then, that was the first half-day that we spent together. From convocation, we moved into two and a half days of adult learning in the buildings. The principals launched into the work with their teams. There was a lot of culture and climate building. Leet in particular has had a significant teacher turnover this year. All those teachers didn't leave Guilford, some moved to Baldwin, some moved to other positions in the district. Leet is now hosting the district-wide ABA program, so they brought new staff into Leet as part of that program move, and two buildings are experiencing significant changes in leadership this year. So a lot of those two and a half days were spent on climate building, culture building, and talking about the holding environment that is part of our vision for high-quality instruction and creating that sense of belonging for the adults, just as we know we need to create that sense of belonging for the students. Students came in on August 27th. They had a short week, two days, Thursday and Friday, and their first week back at school. Really successful couple of days. I mentioned in the earlier meeting, I referenced just a little bit in the vacancy update. We've had really successful bus runs. I think today is our seventh day of school. Buses have been running really well, both in the AM and in the PM. It's never perfect in the first week of school, but very few bumps this year, and buses cleared the roads today by about 4:38, 4:37 or 4:38. And to be making those times, first day of school, we were closer to 4:50. To be making 4:30 times in the first seven days of school, buses are running really, really well. And so I want to thank Dr. Goss and Mr. Hamill and all the principals for the professional learning that they created around the teachers as they returned, and I want to thank all the teachers for creating two wonderful first days of school for our students. for our students that have led into now this first week of school. So really excited about a really smooth opening. It was mentioned earlier, but I do want to note that part of this opening is that we are still talking about technology policy in the district. The board had a policy meeting where we spoke about cellphone policy over the summer. At that meeting, we decided that, and in fact, I have spoken to a number of superintendents who launched new device policies in January rather than in June to great success. So I appreciate that while we looked at policy recommendations in the summer, that this board is choosing to move thoughtfully. It doesn't mean that we're moving slowly without intention, it means that we're moving intentionally, thoughtfully, slowly. I do want to, again, reiterate what Dr. Val Stracy said. The next time this board meets in two weeks at our workshop meeting, that agenda is committed, is dedicated to the conversation of devices in schools and policy related to those devices. There's an ancillary conversation where we also want to continue talking about AI. And it's really fascinating to follow, in the educational realm, how the concerns about screen time and particularly about communication devices are moving in one direction, while schools are also building curricula and asking teachers to more proactively build AI opportunities into the school experience rather than banning. And so I think it is important that we don't necessarily tie those two topics together, but we think about both of those topics, at least at the same time, because one seems to be moving in one direction while another is moving in another direction. I think there's a lot of important medical information that we need to consider, there's a lot of important educational implications that we need to consider, and we collected a lot of important feedback from this community. As with start times, that we also need to consider how it will impact students and families and the community as a whole as we move forward. So I would just remind everybody that that work is continuing, and the next conversation will happen, I believe it's in this room, two weeks from now, when the board meets next for their workshop meeting.
The only other thing I just want to know about opening, and specifically convocation. One of the fun parts of that morning is that teachers, faculty, and staff who have been here for kind of landmark amount of time are noticed, so 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, which is a great celebration of folks who've really kind of committed an extensive amount of time to Guilford Public Schools. But what's likewise so fun about it is that a name gets mentioned, and then this great amount of applause comes up from some part of the auditorium, really kind of demonstrating the camaraderie, the support, the kind of peer engagement that our faculty has in various buildings or across the district. It's just a fun part of the convocation.
It's a lot of fun. And actually, Katie, I thought you were going to mention that this year, we celebrated 22 employees who are all recognizing 20 years of service to the children in Guilford Public Schools.
It was a very, they were brought up to the front of the term, and it was a very long line of folks. It was very impressive and really speaks.
440 years of service, right.
Right, really speaks to the great number of people who come to Guilford Schools and stay to continue to serve our students and our community. It's really remarkable.
And we recognized one employee this year with 40 years of service, and he is a custodian who has been serving the students of Guilford Public Schools for 40 years.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, so it was a really good morning that started a really good week. And it was fun, again, for the first time in 10 years, for the teachers to come back on Monday but to finish that week with kids. And so it was three days for the adults, and then we finished on Thursday and Friday with our students, and it really was exciting to have. Summer's fun around here, but the buildings are empty, they echo. It's fun to have the buildings full of kids again, and to have everybody back, it's really exciting. Which would lead me to my last item, which is the day-one enrollment update, and you have in your folders some of that enrollment information. We have followed this pretty closely over the summer. I think we talked about this at every summer board meeting. I'll remind the board that this is an update on opening day, so this is an update from August 28th. Official enrollment is not taken until October 1st. On October 1st, that will be our official enrollment for the school year '25-'26. There's a couple things that I want to draw your attention to. One is on sort of the, well, you see it on both sheets, but it's a small number on the sheet that we've been spending a lot of time looking at, the colored sheet. I do want to note that enrollment at the high school this year is below 1,000. And based on the enrollment study that we had done by SLAM and that we still have posted on our website, that number will change in the next two years to be back up above 1,000. This is about the lowest point that we anticipate for high school enrollment. It's just dipped below 1,000 for a couple of years, and it should go right back up as larger class groups continue to move forward into the high school. I also, however, want to draw your attention to the elementary spreadsheet that we look at so carefully. I want to note that, again, we have worked really hard to keep four distinct neighborhood schools balanced, and that's a challenge. If we had one elementary school with all of the sections of each grade in one location, we'd have perfectly balanced classes. But maintaining four neighborhood schools leaves us open to changing enrollment and to changing just family patterns. I will note, however, that this year, after two really difficult budget seasons, our average elementary class size continues to sit at 17.7. We're sitting at just below 18 students on average. And we know that our kindergarten classes will be smaller than that, and we expect our third and fourth grade classes may rise above that, but K through 4, the average class size, is 17.7. I think you will note this year that there is less broad discrepancy across the four locations than there has been in some of our more recent years. Now, the board achieved that by adding two kindergarten sections this year that are not in the current budget. So I'll draw your attention to both Lakes and Leet. At both Lakes and Leet, we were budgeted for 11 kindergarten sections, three at Lakes and two at Leet. We are now up to 13 kindergarten sections that you will see there. Those sections were not built into the budget, we will make that work this year. I also want to note that those two sections are not now committed to be there as these class cohorts move into grade one. It is very likely that as four kindergarten sections of 15 at Lakes move into first grade a year from now, that they will become three sections of 20, not four sections of 15. And the same logic would apply to Leet. All those numbers look a little bit higher now, at 21 and 22. That is something that we'll continue to monitor. We will look at that carefully through the budget season this year, and we will have more conversation about that and those numbers, obviously, as we go through budget season. And you'll get another update on these numbers at your October meeting with the official enrollment numbers for October 1.
In a few minutes, we're going to be approving three kindergarten students at Lakes as part of the.
I believe those are currently counted.
Those are counted.
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe, yep, I believe that those students show in the 60 that you see.
Okay.
We will have that for sure in that meeting, on October 1.
Right, October 1, right, yep, okay.
Dr. Freeman, can you comment about the difference between October, I mean, August 6th and August 28th at GHS? Where it looks like we're down 11 students here at the high school in the month of August. Where did they go?
I'd have to go back and look at that. So I did want to draw your attention to it, but I don't have a specific answer about whether that was a correction to a number, or whether that was geographic movement, or whether that is maybe students who chose to go to another school. I can, if you'd ask me again in October, I'll have that answer.
Okay. And I know our demographic, most recent demographic study suggested we're going to start inching back up.
Correct.
And you're noting the numbers at the high school and noting that it will increase again as we see particularly the 7th and 8th grade enter. But I am noticing that, again, our elementary school grades continue in the low 200s. So we may see an upswing, but per the demographic study, it's not going to go back, right? I mean, my kids are now 25 and 28. One was in a class of 300.
Yes.
In Guilford Public Schools, and one was in a more typical class of like 275.
Yeah, the SLAM study shows a decline that stops and plateaus for three, four, or five years, and then a slow growth back. We are not going to rebound quickly to those numbers.
Right.
What we're going to start seeing, and again, our decline was always slower than surrounding or similarly demographic communities. But our slow decline has leveled and is now sort of holding, and I think you can see sort of that hold.
Yeah.
And it will then start to climb again.
Start to go up, yeah.
Correct, yep. And in, you know, in 10 years, we will begin, we'll see significantly increasing numbers, but not dramatically increasing. We have no concerns about capacity right now at this time.
Absolutely, but also to my point, we do expect it to go up.
Yes.
For folks who have commented in our community about lower numbers, they're not, we're not expecting them to stay this low.
No, or continue dropping. Nope, not at all.
Other questions or comments on the enrollment? All right.
I think that completes my report.
Thank you, I think so. All right, so we're going to move on to nine, the board agenda. The first is 9.1, personnel items. We did hear a number of these names.
We really foreshadowed this one a lot.
We did, that's okay. In the introduction to new staff. But we are being asked to ratify the appointment of the following teachers. Jessica Giamatti, Baldwin Middle School, special education teacher. Madeline Haberman, Cox Elementary School, grade three teacher. David Johnson, Guilford High School, financial literacy teacher. Valerie LaRose Sousa, Leet Elementary School, school psychologist. Michelle Pacienza, Jones Elementary School, special education. Kristen Petrella, Leet Elementary School, kindergarten teacher. And Teresa Pizarroso, Lakes Elementary School, special education pre-K teacher. Is there a motion to ratify the appointment of these teachers?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. All right, thank you. We are then asked to ratify the appointment of the following administrator, Paul Capola, Baldwin Middle School, assistant principal. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention. Nope, that's unanimous, thank you. And then we are asked to ratify the resignation of the following teacher, Haley Clark, Leet Elementary School, special education. Is there a motion?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's everyone, thank you. All right. 9.2 is to accept registration for three kindergarten students under the age of five requesting enrollment in '25-'26. We've done this a number of times over the last several months. Since the state of Connecticut changed the start date for kids to enter kindergarten, they did enact an assessment that could, each district could consider, for parents who were asking a child who turned five after the new start date to be able to start kindergarten. We have done this process again a number of times over the last few months, and we're being asked to approve three students for Lakes that were assessed and approved by the building principal for admission to kindergarten. Is there, is there a concern?
No.
Oh, sorry. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Receive for possible action priorities and initiatives. I think Dr. Freeman or Dr. Goss, I'm going to turn over to one of you, right?
Yes, and I, sorry for the distraction, I was just throwing it up on the screen.
Oh, perfect.
So you have a copy of the proposed priorities for this school year in your folder. I have just thrown them up on the screen. I will also note that I'm going to show you this full version, and then there is a more condensed language version that I'm going to put up as well, which was something we did last year for the first time, and we found it to be really helpful. So I did want to start with the full, complete version, and then I'll show you the more condensed version after this. I believe you have both copies in your folder tonight.
Yes, we do.
I'll note, just as we, these priorities, we discussed initially at a Board of Education meeting in June, where the board and I had the first public conversation about the direction in which we want to continue moving. That conversation continued, and that conversation continued over the summer with the leadership team and our annual retreat. What you see in front of you is informed by those two conversations, with the leadership team internally and with the Board of Education at that meeting in June. I think we were in the Lakes Library for that conversation. I will note that in those two conversations, we did not talk about the start time concerns. And I do not have start time identified here as initiative, as an initiative. I want to also note that in no given year does the list of initiatives completely capture all of the work that we do in any one year. There are things that have been initiatives for the last year or two years that are not on the list this year because they become part of our standard work. And there's a lot of our standard work that doesn't get called out in those initiatives every year. Likewise, I will note that there are concerns that come to us that are raised because of circumstances or that come from the community that we can be nimble enough to respond to. So I just want to be clear that I am not bringing forward start times as one of our initiatives for the year. That doesn't mean that this board can't continue to listen to public concern and that we can't choose to begin a conversation because it doesn't get on a list of initiatives that this board approves in September or October of any given year. And if I had a few more minutes, I could think of lots of good examples of things that we did that weren't necessarily represented in one of these places. All of that said, I think it was Eisenhower, I just saw a quote recently, it was from Isabel. I just saw a quote recently that said, "Plans are worthless, but planning is essential." We always need to be thinking carefully about the direction in which we need to go. We need to be thinking about where we want to take our schools and what we need to do for our students. We need to be planning all the time. But writing it down and putting it on a piece of paper doesn't then make it the most important thing around. That plan needs to be constantly monitored and adjusted, right? And I think of the GPS that's running in your car compared to a paper map. The paper map is there, and it's static, and that is a version of a plan. But the GPS that runs in your car while you're driving changes if the traffic conditions in front of you change, and it offers you alternatives along the way. As we talk about our plans and initiatives, I think of them as our active planning. I do not think of them as a strategic plan or as the plan that we codify and laminate and then stick to. And so I just, I just want to throw that out as we introduce these. The priorities this school year have not changed. The priorities have stayed relatively, I think, static over the last 10 years or more, because I think that we have fallen into a thoughtful way to think about our priorities. As a school system, we know that our foremost priority is the physical and emotional safety of our students. The first thing that we need to do is provide our students a safe place to be, and that's our first priority. Secondly, and we've talked about it a little bit when I mentioned, I talked a little bit about our work at convocation, we also need to provide a professional environment. So beyond creating a safe environment for adults and children who walk these halls, we also need to provide a professional environment for those educators, where they know that they are supported and that they are always expected to be growing, pursuing high-quality instruction and growing their own practice. We've talked about that quite a bit when we talk about things like the coaching model that we have built in this system, when we talk about the professional learning communities in which our teachers engage. Every time we ask you to hire a principal into this system, and we tell you that we're looking for the next educational leader, instructional leader joining our team. If we do those first two components well, then and only then can we get down to the reason that we are here, and then we can provide rigorous classroom settings where students are learning because we center their learning, we ask them to make their thinking visible so that we have a sense of what's going on with them, and then we... visible so that we have a sense of what's going on with them, and then we respond to that thinking with materials, with content, with experts, with instruction in the moment that helps the students to really learn in the ways that they want and in the ways that we know that they are capable of achieving. So those are the three priorities, and we've put them in different orders in different years, we have wordsmithed them, but safe and professional and rigorous learning environments have been for a long time now what Guilford Public Schools are about. That said, we then every year identify the specific short-term plan. What are the specific pieces of work that we need to be engaging in now to help us moving in that direction? This year, through those conversations, both with the board and with the leadership team, and I want to be clear, not everything that we talked about at the board meeting is, is called out maybe overtly here, and not everything that we discussed with the leadership team makes this list either, right? There's also prioritizing and trimming and really being able to have the capacity to focus on the list in front of us. But I do think that the board will recognize our conversation in June. What we intend to do this year, and we are presenting it to you tonight, it doesn't mean that we're asking you to approve it tonight, there may need to be a lot of conversation and some revision before we ask you to approve, but we are suggesting that this year we continue our professional learning related to Guilford's model of high-quality instruction. It's what I talked about in my report around Convocation, it's what I've just been talking about. It's really digging in and really working into systems that are interrelated. It is that shared pedagogical understanding. It is the coaching system that helps teachers to enact that shared understanding. It's the teacher growth plan that now pulls principals into that growth professionally as well, in that we create an actual ecosystem that is focused on the professional learning because only then can we focus on the student learning. We need to continue to invest in curriculum revision and focus on research-proven resources and practices. You know that last year in the budget, in addition to setting aside time this summer for a curriculum institute, that we have also identified stipends for teachers who will be identified as curriculum specialists?
Coordinators.
Coordinators? Curriculum coordinators who specialize in helping to move that curriculum work forward. We want to work more overtly beginning this year, I don't think this is something that will necessarily be completed this year, but developing grade-level progressions and indicators for the competencies that are called out in our Portrait of the Graduate. We've been talking about the competencies that we expect to see for graduating seniors. What do those look like as they are viewed for ninth graders, for seventh graders, for fifth graders, and for the elementary students? Those progressions need to be built on the content expertise that we expect teachers to bring and students to build in those content areas. But remember, it's not an accident that the Portrait of the Graduate doesn't refer to reading or writing or science. That's the content on which we build the competencies that are called out in the portrait, and both are interrelated and co-equal. The content is important in and of itself, but the competencies are important in and of themselves as well, and there's a, there's a dynamic between the two. We talked about that quite a bit in the June conversation, and we may need to continue to refine that. At Convocation, I showed a visual with the teachers, with all the teachers, faculty, and staff that centered the adult learning and around that center placed the portrait and standards, content and curriculum standards, and our pedagogical understanding of high-quality instruction. Maybe what we need to do is share that visual a little more overtly and talk about that, but that's there as well. Last year, I believe the verb was that we needed to explore or continue learning about restorative practices. This year, that verb moves to implement restorative practices in our schools. This is a state mandate, it's also work that we've been doing with Dr. Harrison. Our work preceded the mandate, but now that the mandate is out there, we need to be moving so that work continues to percolate its way down to the classroom level with principals as well as with Dr. Harrison. As was mentioned a couple times tonight, we will develop and implement technology policy, including use of both communication devices and AI. I know it is not done yet, but that is a focus for this year as we continue. And whether we launch it in January or whether we launch something in this coming September, we will launch something that has been thoughtful and that is, that is not knee-jerk, that takes into the decision, the feedback that we've been receiving from teachers and from parents, and importantly, in Guilford, students as well. They are an important voice in this conversation. And then finally, we want to really explore opportunities for district communication and public relations opportunities with the broader Guilford community. We were reminded, we were reminded a few times last year, but we spoke a lot as a board at the end of last school year about a lot of the good things that we do that we aren't actively pushing out into the community. I don't want to spend a lot of energy patting ourselves on the back, but we do need to make sure that the broader community knows what we do in the Guilford schools and how well we do the things that we do in the Guilford Public Schools. So, we could stop and talk here, or we could take a look at the more slimmed-down version. I don't know what the pleasure of the board is.
Go ahead, Dr. Freeman.
Well, in the spirit of communicating with the community, two of the issues that we raise here, the progression of indicators of competencies.
Yep.
We've been asked this year about whether or not we think mastery of content, which does not show up in the Portrait of the Graduate. And I know that we implicitly believe that's a baseline, but I think it's crucial that we articulate it as a, as a high priority. That is, all the core learning that people think of as reading and writing and math and self-studies and science, we're not in any way ignoring, but to be able to articulate that as a priority as part of this, I think we need to be able to clarify that, since you started it tonight. The second thing is that for some people, the notion of restorative has no meaning whatsoever. So what is meant by restorative? Restorative practices?
So that's a really good question, and I mean, just for purposes of conversation, it doesn't get, and I, actually, I wonder, we phrase it the same way, so quite honestly, what we need to do is in the slimmed-down version, we need to pull out restorative, which is a jargony word, and we need to put in the simpler answer. The simpler answer is that restorative practices, which again, are a mandate from the state of Connecticut, is that school districts need to be moving in a direction that before we discipline students, before we implement punitive measures in reaction to student behavior, that we have first worked with education and the opportunity for students to make right what they may have made wrong in any violation of a school rule or a community expectation. And so, restorative practices mean before school systems move to detentions or suspensions or expulsions, that students are given an opportunity to understand what they did wrong and to try to make right what they did wrong. Now, that can have some complicated implications in a community when two students are involved in an interaction that has a negative side, because sometimes that means a student who was rude or unkind or inappropriate to another child needs to have an opportunity to hear from that child what they did that was wrong or inappropriate or hurtful to them. So it also involves a lot of communication with parents and opportunities for restorative conversations to happen either in class settings or in small settings, where one student gets to say to another, "You hurt my feelings," or "You violated my identity," or my, right? And how do you do that in a community where some students aren't going to be comfortable in that setting, and some parents want to know what that is, is about? So we spent the last two years talking with staff about it, working as a leadership team, and now this year really beginning to look at what that's going to mean for school responses. What does it mean for an assistant principal who responds to a teacher who says, "Paul was misbehaving in my class today." What does it mean for a parent who calls and says, "Paul was inappropriate in his conversation with my child today." So, yes, I can, I can take that out in the shorter version. I think it needs to stay in the original version because that's the language the state uses, and that's the language that our educators use, but in this version specifically, it needs to be more clear, and it can't be as long as everything I just explained, so we'll work on that.
Does, does anyone have questions about, so this is a receive item tonight, there are opportunities for further discussion now, if we want it. We will be asked next month to act on these, but there is an opportunity for our reaction, our input, our questions, our comments. Does anyone have any of those now?
I know there's one bullet that I need to rewrite. I will work on the restorative component. I'm happy to receive email feedback from board members between now and then, and we'll come back with a revised version.
Great.
We will also take that comment about that fourth bullet specifically and make sure we look more carefully and make sure there are other opportunities to apply the same logic here.
And then, probably pretty much the same question, but as we see, we have a fully fleshed-out and then a shorter condensed version for kind of easier, quick reading. Is there, the other place we may have comments or thoughts is, in addition to the restorative practice, are there other things that we want, or other ways that we're concerned that the shorter version either is missing something or needs, needs clarity?
Or the longer version, right?
Yeah.
If there's something from our conversation in June or, right, that, that the board wants to see, this, right, this, while we develop this collaboratively, this is ultimately a board document as you set the direction for us.
Right.
And so, the leadership team very much appreciates the back and forth, but if there's something that the board members want to see added, by all means, we're happy to add it, and then we will follow that directive.
Great. So I am going to ask if they reach out to you that, just copy me so I know what we're,
Yep.
what kind of discussion we're going to need as we go in to the next meeting, but, all right?
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. 9.4 is to receive from the policy committee. Regulation.
Yes, so Regulation 5005 is actually in keeping with what we were just discussing.
Yep.
With restorative practices. So this is the school climate policy that everyone has in their packet tonight as a receive item. I'm just going to read the first paragraph for the public, so everyone is kind of on the same page about what this regulation is about. It's the Administrative Regulations Regarding Connecticut School Climate Policy. The Guilford Board of Education has adopted the Connecticut School Climate Policy in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Section 1022-2CC. The purpose of these administrative regulations regarding Connecticut School Climate Policy is to outline additional requirements under Connecticut General Statutes Sections 10222AA regarding the reporting of, assessment of, and responses to challenging behavior and bullying, as well as certain related requirements. So this is adopted by the state. We had our attorneys at Shipman &amp; Goodwin take a look at it, we had our staff take a look at it, but generally, this is adopting the requirements and the regulations from the state, and it will define and advise on how we handle challenging behavior throughout the district.
Terrific.
Yeah, so that's going to be some fun reading.
Yeah, and so this will also come to us in, at our October meeting as an AFTAN item, so.
Yes.
And the summary of this is that in general, this is taking previous state-required responses to essentially what was just categorized as bullying behavior and is moving in a less punitive, more restorative direction. It is a sort of a new landscape. The policy that is associated to these regulations was required by statute for us to adopt without change.
Change, right.
So for the first time that, for the first time in my career, the state required us as a local board to adopt the policy. These regulations were then suggested, and we've had Shipman &amp; Goodwin look at them, we've got some room to move within the regulations, but the regulations have to align to that required policy. So as we discussed at the policy meeting, and I think many if not all of you attended the policy meeting, we, right, we went through this in some detail to talk about the requirements of the state and how we can make some modification, but it is all in the spirit, you're exactly right, Kristen, of that, moving in that restorative direction.
And I'll just read another section just to give the public kind of an example, because Dr. Freeman, you talked a bit about when there's two students involved, but also, this governs whether or not a single student is removed from a classroom for disruptive behavior but not necessarily targeted at another student. So for example, it says, "While a student has been removed to a designated area for basically interrupting the classroom, the student may receive supports that include but are not limited to intervention from a school employee trained to provide such intervention, therapeutic resources, mental health supports." So that's really what restorative practices is starting to engage, is the overall support system rather than just something punitive. So rather than a kid just getting suspended, this is like, okay, let's start addressing why we got here in the first place, and what can we do to restore this kid back to normalcy rather than, or typical behavior rather than something simply punitive.
So the short answer is, we're trying to turn problematic behavior into learning opportunities.
Yes.
Yes, I like that.
I'm guessing that if anyone has a question before our next meeting, they can reach out to you.
Sure can.
About this? Wonderful. Appreciate it. All right, that gets us through the board agenda items, so we're now on to reports of committees. Does the policy committee have anything additional?
Yes, so we met very briefly last month. We had a special policy meeting to discuss cell phone use and if we were going to be able to have anything implemented in time for the start of the school year. And we, as a policy committee, just as that committee decided that this is a much bigger topic, we need to bring it to the larger board, and there were many items that we, as a small group, hadn't even considered, like, how does it get enforced in a lunch wave? So we, as a policy committee, have requested that we have a greater board discussion, which we are next, in two weeks. So on the 22nd, our workshop meeting will be about cell phone use, communication devices, AI, and how we can start really developing a policy around best practices.
Wonderful.
If I could just point out that on our agenda tonight, in the little box about next meetings, it does say that that meeting's at Lakes.
Oh, thank you.
So I just wanted to point out that there should be a clarification if it is going to change to Lakes.
Yeah, I'm seeing it there too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We will make sure that we communicate that clearly to the town. I think people are going to want to be able to, to.
So it's here?
I.
That makes sense.
There's going to be public, it's very unique, right? I believe the workshop is intended for public input, I believe.
No, the workshop, the workshop meeting, it doesn't mean that we don't want public input. The workshop meeting is, is a, is a meeting without, unless you were intending it to be differently.
So when the, when the group, when the T-group shared their report, we opened that meeting up for public comments.
Absolutely.
This was intended to be a board conversation, doesn't mean we couldn't add one at the end, so Dr. Bell, you and I can have that conversation.
Excellent.
And right now, we're showing Lakes. We will think about whether we need to move it for space, and we will communicate very clearly where that meeting takes place. I misspoke when I said, "Right here in this room."
The date is?
The date is September 22nd.
And even if there is no public comment at the 22nd, I believe it is the intention of, of superintendent the board to have a public conversation.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent, right.
Yes, I was just speaking specifically to the next meeting.
Right, and I was answering in terms of the typical structure of workshop meetings, right, which are meetings that allow the board to dive into, frequently, really dive into a particular topic and have in-depth conversation, which is different than a meeting tonight, which tends to be somewhat of a business meeting.
Yep.
And then typically doesn't have public comment, again, not because we aren't interested, but it is the, the opportunity to discuss, but we can certainly determine what's best.
This is, I mean, this topic is, it's very much like conversations that this community had around full-day kindergarten.
Right.
And then around the purposes of homework, and then around start times, and even to a maybe slightly lesser degree around high school dress code, right? All of those topics were, were significant changes where the community came out and commented, and, and it got complicated because, well, and I'd add the, I'd add the mascot to that conversation. And when we have had those conversations, I've watched parents come to the podium where one says, "There is way too much homework in this system, my child is up at 11 o'clock in tears every night." And then the very next speaker says, "My kid hasn't done homework in months, there is no..." There is no homework in this school system." And you hear completely contradictory, and they almost sound like mutually exclusive needs that are being expressed. Our job is to figure out a way not to make those mutually exclusive and to try to figure out how we can come up with a nuanced response. Or do we end up making a snow day call where you can only be late, delayed, or, right, you're either delayed, open, or closed? There's only three choices, and what's it going to be? This, to me, feels like that conversation. And I'm watching school districts and states approach it very differently across the country, where some made immediate decisions and are now wrestling with those decisions, some are procrastinating and avoiding it completely, and some are trying to have thoughtful conversations. I understand that some may categorize us as procrastinating. I really think we're trying hard to have a thoughtful and inclusive conversation.
Well, and I don't want to predict or forecast how our discussion will go, but I believe that among the nine of us, there are a range of thoughts on what we would like to see. And therefore, I really want to have a thoughtful discussion and give opportunity, opportunity for that discussion. If we don't have public comment at that meeting, it is a public meeting, so any of the public is welcome at any point to listen to the discussion. And as was indicated, if we don't end up doing any kind of public comment at that meeting, that is not a meeting where decisions about this are going to be made. We will create opportunities for that as well. So, but we will discuss kind of the best approach to that, if any of my colleagues have input on that. And truly, the only reason we wouldn't have public comment at the next meeting is really to give the full-time over-to discussion and then create an opportunity for public comment later. But we'll determine what we think might be the best approach. And again, at any point, the public for the whole meeting is welcome because we want this to be a very transparent process as well. All right. Operations Committee, is there anything additionally?
Nothing. We haven't touched upon it. It was a nice brief meeting.
Yeah, that's right. It was a short meeting. We had, we had some time afterwards. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, anything to report out? Okay. Liaisons to town committees, anything to report out from any town committees that folks are on? All right. And we have on the agenda Liaison to Learn Board of Directors. The Learn Board of Directors gives each participating district the opportunity to have someone and come be on their board. We're a little bit challenged because their meetings are Thursdays, 9 to 11, and many of us have work commitments or others. So I'm going to be now reaching out to see in what other ways we can engage, even if we don't have a representative that can be on that board. So I'm going to follow up with that. Number 11, there's an opportunity for public comments for items that aren't on the agenda or were on the agenda. It's just, it's a, it's a broader range of topics can be brought forth to the board. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? All right?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Again, please state your name and address, and please keep it to three minutes for comment.
Poly Reader, Sage Hollow Road, Guilford. I just wanted to say with regard to the cellphone policy and smart devices and having it be bell-to-bell to have truly the positive impact it can have, you know, not having it, you can have your cellphone amongst classes or whatnot. And also, I mean, Julia Chaff, the team that she has, the high school's fantastically well-run. It is such a positive, I think, move when the kids come to the high school. I tell parents that all the time as they ask me with younger kids. So I think we know, you know, what needs to be done to have the most positive effect on kids' mental health, on their attention, and et cetera. And then I also wanted, though, to change topics and say, again, with regard to start time, or to say further, I mean, it's sounding more and more, there's no one statewide, you know, mandate that's going to come down. Moira has taken leadership and already put a bill forward last year. Two other senators in other areas of the state have done significantly as well. Senator, our Senator Cohen worked tirelessly on the task force. She had these binders, and she poured through them. So I think we're really well-positioned, and we cannot keep, you know, saying, "Oh, we're going to wait around until the state tells us all to do it." So it's going to make it really easy to put our athletic games aligned. You know, that's just, we just can't do that. I think clearly, yes, it's difficult. Change would be difficult. Yes, there are costs, but the benefits outweigh the costs. We know that. And honestly, we've elected you guys. We have very esteemed and rightfully so leadership team. We expect you to do the hard things. We expect you to, you know, set the bar, move the bar, and make things happen in the right direction for our kids. And also with regard to start time, as I've said at other meetings, it's pervasive, it's a pervasive issue. It's also with regard to exams twice a year for the entire high school. It also goes, happens at Adams, it happens with the PSAT, you know, everything's at the crack of dawn in the morning. It doesn't have to be pervasive like that. And I think our resources are, you know, it amounts to just a whole lot of Band-Aids. This fantastic instructional coaching we have happening with teachers and the professional development, the curriculum redesign, these things are valuable. More and more mental health resources that are put into the schools, but, how much longer do I have?
You don't.
I'm at the end?
Yes.
Okay, so let me just say, in wrapping up, sorry about that. I did want to point out, so I, we had heard time and again that it's law that we have to have a seat for every student when the buses go around. And so I looked it up, and there's the Office of Legislative Research put out the report that says it is not. The State Department of Ed has issued guidelines, and it is not mandatory. And it just says that, quote, "Broadly, boards must be in a position to provide transportation to every student on any given day, even when those students' families can't drive to school." So, I mean, under what possible, like sci-fi movie scenario can you possibly think of where that would need to happen, right? And so I don't, I don't see that it's legally required.
And we can, we can certainly, I mean, we're obviously aware of the state's actions and policy around that. But thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Truly, truly appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? All right. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much for those of you in the room who've joined us, and thank you for those of us watching the live stream. We appreciate it. Good night.